Interested parties, including Planning Board members, welcome to the Cohasset Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, July 28, 2020 at 6:31 PM. This is a Zoom virtual meeting. After the Planning Board makes a roll call, then Lauren Lind, the Director of Planning, will explain to the public how they can communicate in the discussion tonight. So Planning Board, each individual by alphabetical order. Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer.
Tom Callahan. Can you please say Tom Callahan? Sorry.
Tom's muted.
Tom Callahan, I'm here.
Thank you, Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, present.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter here.
Amy Glassmeyer here. So we're all here in attendance. Lauren, would you please explain to the public how we may communicate during this hearing?
Sure, I also am going to suggest that we do the same when we get into our hearings that are a little bit later on the agenda, because I know we have attendees coming and there's not that many people here already. So just for anyone, I'm going to promote, also Cindy Amara is here as our special counsel for the evening for the Planning Board, and she just joined us, so I'll just announce her presence. Thank you for joining us, Cindy. So for members of the public, if you're wishing to address the board on any matters, if you're looking for a specific item on the agenda, there will be a time for public comment for that public hearing, and we would ask that you input your name and address into the question and answer field at the bottom. You can also leave written comments. Anything written there will be kept as part of the record for this meeting, and then if you'd like to address the board directly, we can allow you to speak and use your camera. We ask that you not be repetitive and that we cap comments at three minutes per person.
Thank you, Lauren. For the public to also know, we do read comments from the public into the records so that the information that we get in paper form is a part of the material that we collect. I'd like to indicate that the first item of business, application for approval not required under subdivision control law, ANR 1024, seven Black Horse Lane, has been rescinded, and so we have approximately 20 minutes that we could spend doing some business, and that would include such things as member comments and committee liaison updates, staff updates, items not anticipated, and approval of minutes. So let me go first and ask, do Planning Board members have any comments they'd like to make at the start of the meeting?
We know why this thing was withdrawn tonight.
Lauren?
No, there was no explanation, just a simple request to withdraw that I filed. They didn't give an explanation.
It's completely withdrawn and they have to refile?
Yes, that's correct. You know, the proposed plan that they had, nothing will happen with that until they return to the town for some sort of action.
Other comments? All right, then, I'm going to ask Planning Board members, it's been a very light summer so far, and people may or may not have liaison comments, but let's try to squeeze those in while we're here. Tom Callahan?
Well, the zoning working group is meeting every two weeks, so we're not having a late summer. We are dealing with all kinds of things, and it looks, I don't know if any of you heard Katie's presentation last night on the Master Plan Committee about what's going on, but as far as the zoning working group specifically, right now, we're working with five proposed bylaws for the fall. There could be more. We, I would say, four of them are to address issues and putting, I would categorize as putting out fires, and the fifth one is to change, deal with the zoning in the harbor, partly something that needs to be done to consolidate districts since there's so many districts down there, and partly to deal with some issues brought up as a consequence of the overlay project. So we are working, finalizing the text, and I'll get that to the board as soon as I can, probably shoot for our first meeting in September to actually start seeing text, maybe, maybe as early as, since we have this open meeting to discuss a number of administrative things in August, I'll probably have the drafts ready for everybody to look at before then. I have no idea when fall town meetings are going to happen, but we would have to do our statutory review process well enough in advance, so, but I think we can have an informal discussion about them.
All right.
That's what we've been working on, and we've been busy at it.
Great, thanks very much, Tom. Clark Brewer?
I have nothing to report.
So nothing from any of the surveys on the Elm Street corridor or anything like that?
Nothing on the Elm Street corridor.
All right, Lauren?
I don't mean to jump ahead, but I can touch on a couple of things when you get to my update.
All right, Paul Grady?
I have nothing to report right now.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter?
Nothing on my end.
I know, Eric, you've just been appointed, and so has Paul, so welcome to the liaison process.
Great, I like it.
I have very little to report, other than the town has been very busy in submitting grant proposals to raise funds for various purposes, including the possibility of doing a downtown Main Street study. All of that is highlighting the fact that we are really woefully and adequately staffed, not because we don't have great staff, but because we have more work than they can do. So that was the sum from what was basically said last night. There is a very strong interest on the part of many new Cohassetanians to really work hard on improvements within the town. That was a part of Katie Dugan's presentation. All right, with that then, Lauren Lind?
Thank you. Oh, sorry, did Tom have something?
Well, it's separate from the zoning working group thing that's come up in the last few days that I want to discuss. I don't know if we're going to do it now or at the end of the meeting, because it was the add-on about talking about common driveways.
I'll touch on that briefly. So I'll just give a couple of updates really quick. First, just some dates to mark your calendars. Our upcoming Planning Board meetings are August 11th, but we only have one August meeting in the schedule, and then September 8th, and those will be at 6:30, our usual time. We have our second seminar in the Land Use Series with Citizen Planning Training Collaborative, and that topic will be roles and responsibilities of board members. We are planning Tuesday, August 17th at 5:00 PM. There's two surveys I want to announce for you. One is actually being conducted with TEC as the consultant for our Public Works Department, and that is for a section of the Route 3 corridor, 3A corridor, excuse me. So I encourage you, I will distribute that after the meeting, and it's a survey right now to sort of visioning about what we might look to do for improvements along the area that would eventually go into the state transportation improvement process. The second survey that I'll let you know about that's not open yet, but is upcoming, is the second survey for Elm Street corridor. So where we left off with the Elm Street corridor project, we had a forum, our second forum in June. We sort of, our consultants Weston and Sampson presented two thoughtful sort of alternatives for corridor reconfiguration, and what we are recognizing is that in this corridor, if you think about this as three segments, you have the middle section of Elm Street, the residential portion, and then it's anchored by the two intersections, the one in the harbor, and then the one close to the village. And there are any number of combinations, that's sort of how this roadway might be improved. So what we're really doing right now this summer is looking to expand public engagement. We had a focus group with some of the village side business owners recently, this week. My co-partner in engineering and I attended, we were working on the survey that's going to be live and trying to get as much feedback as we can, and we plan to do some farmers' market tables to really, really do a deep dive on these alternatives so that we can come back in September at our third public forum to present sort of alternative three, which will hopefully be sort of the happy medium of the options there, based on what we get for community input. So that'll be coming out soon, and it'll be open through the month of August, so we'll be encouraging you to take the survey, as well as ask everyone that you know to take the survey, because the most input we can get will be the best outcome for the community. And then finally, my update, just quickly, and I'll be talking more about this at the August meeting, but we're just working internally on a variety of process and policy improvements, things such as even our planning and procedures and filing guidelines. We are working on a whole permitting-wide department update on the fee schedules. A lot of our fee schedules are several years out of date, and the Planning Board fees have not been updated since 2008, so we're just looking to bring them into sort of more current standards that we're seeing sort of in the industry. And then at our next meeting, we will also hear more deeper connections from our liaison updates, and I know Tom had already requested some time to discuss the zoning bylaw updates, and then we will also hear from Katie Dugan and the Master Plan Implementation Committee, their annual update, which is the same presentation that the Select Board got this week, and that'll be the time that they'll come and update the Planning Board. So it'll be, August will be a nice opportunity for some goal setting and thinking about proactive planning and different items other than applications.
Right. Tom, would you like to return to the stage?
Yeah, sure. Email and talk at the same time. Took a look at the common driveway regulations that we have, and since this was going to come up, and it comes up repeatedly anytime we seem to deal with an ANR, I'd like to propose that we amend that. You know, on the zoning working group, we're working on things to change things where we don't see as many pork chop lots, maybe go back to a kind of development that would require full subdivisions, to the extent we have anything of that scale. But common driveways, we, our town's incredibly generous that we let up to eight houses be attached to a single common driveway. And I'd like to propose that we amend that to no more than three. My understanding is to amend a regulation, we have to have a public hearing, and I would propose we do that for September 8. I have glanced at the rest of the regulation, I don't think there's anything else that's jumping out at me that needs amendment. It's simply, and ignore the requirement for what a common driveway needs to be built to. Not aware that we enforce that all the time, but we're far too generous, I think, on having so many lots that can be served by a common driveway. There's a reason the subdivision control law exists, for safety to require a subdivision road. And I think it's, you know, considering the fact we don't see a lot of subdivisions, we don't see a lot of, you know, double-digit number of lot developments, I think we need to tighten this up. And the simple change would be to say that no more than three lots can be served by a common driveway.
All right, Tom, so how will that get formalized for our next meeting? Will you make a?
Well, I'd have to write the amendment, which is fairly simple, and then whatever the notice requirement is for the public hearing to change a regulation, I defer to Lauren and Cindy on that one. But, you know, I don't want to clog up our meeting on August 11th, it is necessary, it's also kind of quick, we might not even have the time to schedule the public hearing correctly, so, and shoot for the September 8th meeting, but I'm bringing it up informally to see if there's any feedback on it, if anybody agrees that we need to make some changes there.
Is there any comment?
I certainly would be willing to talk through what the purpose of the common driveway standards is relative to creating public ways instead with subdivision control laws. I mean, I will say that there's sort of a problem in the tentacle asset of having too many private ways, which sometimes are common driveways and sometimes they're not. But there are certainly, even though there's ways to improve all these private ways, most of them were built and never intended to remain private. Most cities and towns, once a roadway has been, and a subdivision have been completed to the standards, they become public ways for lots of good reasons.
That's not the situation I'm talking about. I'm talking about true common driveways that we see facilitated by our 50-foot frontage. You know, on the zoning working group, you know, we go back into history, there was a time when Cohasset had zoning of 100 feet, a frontage of 100 feet, 125 feet, like other suburbs, where a decision was made in the 60s to change that and to bring our current 50-foot frontage.
Well, I think that was the reason.
Wait a minute, Clark, will you?
Well, no, like, so, I mean, nobody was around then who's around now who can explain this, but it seems to me, and I know that, you know, my subdivision cul-de-sac and a couple of others were probably permitted in the late 60s, and it just seemed to be a philosophical change that we were going to allow the pork chop lot and common driveways as opposed to having full cul-de-sac subdivisions like my street. And I will tell you that the thinking on the zoning working group is to go back to the other and to more encouraged subdivisions with safe roads than to let, you know, have all these pork chop lots and have just common driveways serving lots. But even if we allow common driveways in certain circumstances, I'm not saying eliminate them. Number one, we need to enforce the regulation that we have, which requires a certain amount of width, a certain amount of payment, a certain amount of construction, not just some dirt driveway, not just some casually thrown down piece of asphalt. That's number one, but, you know, I think we need to make a value judgment of whether eight houses being allowed to connect to a common driveway is the safest and the most, the best thing for everyone, as we are now in a period where we see development of what in one day would have been called marginal land. We're seeing back lots being developed, you know. That's all, I think it's worth discussion, I mean, it certainly would have come up tonight as an issue with Black Horse Lane. I think there's a development on Forest Ave where there's a lot of lots being served by a common driveway, you know. Is that something we want? I, you know, the purpose of the subdivision law is to have safe roadways.
So I want to curtail this conversation now, because we just reached the time to the next item?
I wasn't going to follow up anyway. Why don't we move on to the next item?
Then I'll go forward with getting it ready for a public hearing, unless anybody objects to it.
I didn't hear any objections, so please go ahead and do that.
Okay.
All right, our next item, Lauren Lind is going to speak to, it's a vote to update Cohasset active street lists. In the specific case of Dolan Lane, change from an inactive to an active list. Lauren, I think that not everybody on the board's going to understand this, and so it's going to need a significant description, and my bet is that we're going to want to deliberate over this and think about it before actions are taken.
Okay, so let me make this as quick as I can. So the concept before you today is Dolan Lane, which is a private way. It had been an informal street name for the longest time. There were homes that, but what is now Dolan Lane, that actually had North Main Street addresses. We were recently contacted by the chief assessor that in coordination with public safety, they've determined that it would be best to rename those houses that front along Dolan Lane, that way, as Dolan Lane addresses. So they've been reassigned, there's no further reassignment of the North Main addresses that they had, so that won't cause any issues with like mail, but the intent here is that the numbers had been sort of lining up out of sequence as there is potential for more house lots back along Dolan Lane. They anticipate in the future, they may need to add lots, and due to the already issues with sequencing of the house lots for public safety response, that is why they chose to rename these streets and assign them Dolan Lane addresses. Now, what this means is that we have a town street list, an active street list, that's maintained by the Planning Board and in conjunction with the town clerk that we all have on file. The last substantial update was actually in November of 2010, and anyone who was back on the board back then, whatever, called Joanne Pilzak, who used to be the administrator for the Planning and Zoning Offices, she had sent out sort of a substantial update with an active street list name. Due, in the Dolan Lane case, we were specifically asked by the assessor and the town clerk to take action, so this is like an administrative approval, the Planning Board is voting to take Dolan Lane out of the inactive list that we have and to bring it into the active street listing. It does not affect, it still will be maintained, it's a private way, and it's not an accepted street-by-town meeting, it's just simply an administrative item to change this in our housekeeping for the active street listing. So I'll pause there for a moment.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
I've lived here for a long time, I've never heard of this distinction between active and inactive. Where is this coming from? What's the legal basis for it? What law is saying we have active streets and inactive streets?
There, we didn't have a bylaw, that's why I checked with Caris North, actually, to see if we needed to have a hearing to do this. It really is just an administrative item that we keep in-house as sort of an internal policy and procedure, and we have a binder in the Planning Board office that has all of the listings, and it, you know, with just categorical information, if they're accepted, if they're a private way, public way, whatever sort of.
Well, accepted as a public way and private way, that's distinction I know, this active and inactive, what's the distinction? What's the legal difference?
So I'd like to have Clark comment, and then I'd like to make a comment myself. Clark?
Yeah, so the street list is usually perfected and generated by a committee, and it is maintaining the street list, what is private, what is public, and what is other. It is a Planning Board responsibility, but it is a critical item for the town clerk to have whatever's a public way, whatever's a private way on the, maintained on the, on the, on the street list. Now, for whatever reason, as you probably all know, I live on Dolan Lane, and North Main Street addresses have been maintained for everyone on Dolan Lane for probably half a century. It doesn't necessarily make sense, but it's one of those, like many, private way easement access situations that, that made people create a North, North Main Street address. It, it's not that unusual, but it's not commonplace either. Certainly, there's a number of Atlantic Ave, other places throughout town that have, like, whatever, the main street address, but they're all accessed through private ways.
Well, that tells me it's a common, all right.
I'd like to speak to this, which is, I feel, by the way that this has been represented, that we don't have a very firm understanding of either the list, but also a process by which we understand and we act upon these types of situations, that I would like to have the assessor provide us with a history of how this has come to be, and, and what are the options that we have, because Clark is absolutely right. I live in a place where we have many Jerusalem roads, and people are all the way up the hill with a Jerusalem Road address, but I feel that trying to just make a change from A to B without understanding, it's, you're describing it as there being no consequence, but we have no documentation about what it means. So I would like to have a little bit more deliberation and some discussion of it on paper, so that we are, the next time an issue like this comes up, somebody can get that piece of paper, they can read it, and they can understand what we're, what this issue is about.
Like, how many of us have actually looked at the, at the street list? I mean, I have, but.
I've seen.
Wait a minute, Tom, Jen Oram?
Thank you. So I just wanted to give a little more background on the street renaming, et cetera, so I have looked at the list and worked with it quite a bit. The public safety and the assessor meet often to make changes for reasons for numbering, and so that people can be found if there's an issue with a fire or a fire engine. There's a list of inactive names, and there's a list that they can choose from. This has happened, I can name three, and we get notations on a 911 sheet, just letting us know the change has been made. This is the first time we've been asked to vote for a while, because this one is on the list of inactive names, but there's also active names, and it is a Planning Board responsibility. So for example, in Highland Ave, there used to be Highland Terrace, that was changed to Brewster Road or Brewster Trail, that was done in the last decade. Grace Drive used to have Jerusalem Road address, but people couldn't find that section. If you remember, Maria Plant lives up there, I know that because she was sad to lose her Jerusalem Road address, but they do it, and they do it quite often. In this case, they're just asking you for a vote to take it off the inactive list to the active list. Also, there's been testimony in the past from Diana Carter, who didn't, who wanted to, who lives on Dolan Lane, who wanted to remain Dolan Lane, because there's a sign that says Dolan Lane. So there's been lots of discussions, just not before this board, and I think it makes sense, we can ask Mary Quill to submit, you know, a little more background, but I just wanted you to know that it is very common. It's not just this Dolan Lane, I mean, I see, I see these changes quite often, and it's mostly for public safety.
Right.
And renumbering.
I get that, but there's no legal distinction between, you know, Clark was talking about public versus private, that I understand, and we have a list that says one is one and one's the other, but this inactive and active.
Well, the names are created by the committee that Clark is referring to and kept as sort of a bank of inactive names, right, Clark? Isn't that how you kind of remember it?
Well, Dolan Lane's always existed.
Right.
It's just that the houses on Dolan Lane had a North Main Street address.
And now the assessor and public safety want to make that sequential and make that change for multiple reasons, but that name is on that inactive list. So I don't know if it's illegal, I think it's part of a committee backup, but we can ask for the history from Mary.
But maybe, I mean.
Before we make a vote, I would like to have this documented, so that we have a complete picture of what it means, and then going forward, there will be something and we won't have to be looking forward in the future. I would also say that, to the extent that this list exists, and it's supposed to be a Planning Board function, but we've never had it come before us, perhaps we want to think about what it means when changes are made about it, but we don't know about it. Right? It is, it is our function, right?
So not the renumbering and not, not the renaming necessarily, they notice us, but we don't have to vote it, the reason you're being asked for a vote is because it's inactive. Is that correct, Lauren? That's, that's how I understand it.
Yes. I would just suggest, we're about to hit seven o'clock now, we can just continue this to another time and get you documentation.
Yeah, we'll get that. Take it up, and we can take it up in August. It'll be just a way to have better codification. All right, well, we're still two minutes in. Can I move forward, do you think, or shall I wait?
Yes, I'm going to start to promote, we have a couple of individuals who'll be joining us, panelists, if you just give me a moment. So we have, I'll just announce who's joining us now. We have the applicant, Mark Trider, we have his attorney, Walter Sullivan, and Kayla McLeod, we have Peter Ellison here, who's from our peer review firm, TEC, and then if Mark or Walter, if you could just let me know who else you might need that's in the attendee section, and I will promote them.
Who is our peer?
We have Peter Ellison of TEC.
So we would also be expecting Chris Nowak, and I think Sevi Strakalowski, Michael Kim.
All right, so this is a public hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A and 300-12 of the Cohasset zoning bylaws for an application for a site plan review filed by Outpost Properties CEO Walter B. Sullivan, who is the applicant's legal counsel. The subject property is 20, comma, 25, comma, and 30 Situate Hill, which for those of you who do not know what that is, it's behind the storage facility on Chief Justice Highway. This is a continued, continued hearing, and we are going to be hearing from both the applicant and from the town's peer reviewer, and this is a continuation from 623. So Mr. Sullivan, would you like to identify who will be speaking first?
Ah, yes, so thank you, just for the record, Walter Sullivan, and I am the attorney for the applicant outpost. Speaking for us tonight will be Mark Trider. I think we should also promote, let's see, I think there's one person from our team.
Matt from VHB?
Right.
Just promoted him, he's here as well.
Chris Nowak, who is on, I think I mentioned Mr. Trider, Sevi Strakalowski, Michael Kim will all be speaking briefly. Chris Nowak, who is on, I think I mentioned Mr. Trider, Sevi Strakalovsky, Michael Kim will all be speaking briefly tonight and Matt Keely from V H B. Boy, now see you again. So as you all know, we were originally before you, June twenty-third. And we suspended that hearing and, and the board was kind enough to provide us with sort of a blueprint for some things they wanted us to respond to. We did submit in writing some materials that we think tracked the items that we took away from that needed to be responded to. And each one of our members of our team is going to speak briefly to each of those tracking that memorandum that outpost submitted last week. I think the first issue up was some further embellishment of the needs assessment and Mark Trider's going to handle that along with wayfinding and signage. So I'm going to ask Mr. Trider sort of address those issues. Then we'll deal with other issues which include parking, building height, coverage, sustainability. And then obviously we'll take any questions that the board has. So Mark, would you be kind enough to speak to the board about your issues?
Sure. Thank you all. Appreciate being back here. We, we put together what we tried to, we tried to use some third party data to substantiate what we feel is a need for this in a evolving and, and very new environment for work. The demand has shifted from the traditional office construction and design into a new, a new design need. We feel we're meeting that need and it's not available elsewhere. Certainly for the price and the size and the amenities that will be offered in our offering. You know, so we, we used data points from Morgan Stanley and from McKinsey to substantiate what we feel is a large and growing need for remote work accommodations in deep suburban towns like Cohasset that also happen to have you know, excellent and enjoyable lifestyle features that people will probably want to enjoy more of through remote work accommodations. And we're trying to make them as pandemic, pandemic resistant as possible. That's, that's a factor in the design. That's not available in other offerings for coworking and traditional office buildings. And so I, I, I definitely wouldn't go through all the data points that have been collected because we don't have the time, but I would love to invite questions or thoughts on what we put together and whether or not you think we should be looking at it a different way, but we feel it really does identify and point out why our offering is superior to all else in the market. And why we feel there's a good demand for it from a macro and micro level.
Are you planning to speak to the other items that Mr. Sullivan indicated you were responsible for?
I, I certainly can if we want to.
Yeah, I think that is a point of order, Mark. It might make sense for our team to make all.
Yeah, exactly.
Would then ask questions and we could do that. So I think we'd also be asking you to talk, Mark, if you'd be so kind, talk about wayfinding and signage and, and mail delivery.
Yeah. So in our last meeting, we talked about reaching out to the postmaster for, for Cohasset and soliciting some thoughts from him on how it would work best. And we summarized those in our memo, but it included a centralized P O box area for, for delivery that tenants of our campus could go and retrieve their mail at. As well as package delivery to a centralized office location, which we will have set up on campus. Similar to if anyone's ever lived in a, you know, an apartment community, a large apartment community, there's systems for delivery where tenants are notified that they have a package and they come pick it up. So those were his suggestions. We're completely fine with that. We think it's in the best interest of everyone involved to have the mail delivery take place that way. On signage and wayfinding, there was some comments as to, you know, will there be you know, numerous signs on the road and, you know, placards that list everyone in the campus on, on three A? That's not how we're planning to run this. We'll have maybe a, a sign visible to street traffic to let people know that our entire community exists where it is. And as people enter the campus, there'll be appropriate signage, I'm thinking placards at each unit to identify who's in it to help people find who's there, but we're not looking to create a roster, a large roster of, of tenants that are going to be in this campus. So we, we are also quite happy and, and agree with, and it's in our interest as well as everybody else's to find the safest and easiest method with, you know, some marketing touches to it and some appropriateness to the, to the community and to the, to the region in, in naming these driveways. And, you know, if the fire chief has input, we're going to be more than happy to collect that and do whatever allows them to reach people in the safest and quickest manner in, in times of need.
Right. Thank, thank you, Mark. Now if it pleased the chair and the other board members. I was next going to ask for Chris Nowak from V H B to discuss coverage and height of the buildings on the site. So Chris, if you could help us out with that?
Sure. Thanks, Walter. I'm going to share my screen here to show a supplemental figure that we had submitted along with the memo. Which clarifies the calculations that people were, were asking about at the last hearing. So what we understood those to be, we're building height, number one. We're showing the buildings along with a numbering system. We have a diagram that's a cross section of the unit and we show how we're measuring building height, which is from the midpoint of the slope roof, the highest slope roof down to existing grade in what we're using as the lowest point on existing grade rather than the average, because the lowest point is a more conservative number. It would actually show that the structure was higher. It's the worst case scenario. And as you can see, because of the site and because of the fact that we're terracing most of these buildings, split levels in that we're in a cut situation as we advance up the hill, the majority of these units when measured per the bylaw have a very small profile, short building height. The highest structure is the sales and conference center, because this portion of the site isn't a fill. But as you can see, we're still nine and a half feet below the forty-five foot building height limit. So this table shows. It's peered, but the table shows the existing ground elevation, the finished floor elevation of the structure. The overall structure height and then the calculated building height. We've also provided some additional information for the, for the open space calculation, the lot coverage calculation. And also there was some question about the overall clearing of the site. So we've provided additional calculations here for the total lot area, the lot coverage. Showing the numbers we use for the calculation. And then we provided some hatching on the plan so that you could see what we're counting for each, for each component of our calculation. So impervious surface, building area. Wooded areas shown in the darker green. This hash represents existing wooded areas that are to be cleared. So these two areas are really the only tree clearing that'll happen as part of this project, the, the large wooded area that's on the southern portion of the site remains. So that's, I think that clarifies the calculation and and demonstrates our compliance from a little more visually than what was previously presented.
And can you, can you zoom on this? I can't see it. So.
Sure. Which, which.
Any, any of these numbers you're telling, the lot clearing, all of this, I can't, you know, you can't see it on this scale.
Yep. And this, this was submitted in the report with the memo. This is the last page in that memo. So you have it electronically. You can zoom in.
Which unless I print, which unless I print, I can't read either.
You should be able to zoom in on the PDF.
Not to the point where I could read it. It, it, every time I zoomed in, it went off to the right side. It eventually left my screens. I couldn't read it.
Does this address it? Tom, are you able to read this?
Yeah, I can see it.
Would, would you like the, would you like Chris to go through the numbers specifically?
No, that's all right. Just want to make sure it complies with the new.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, anything further?
Nope, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Well, I think maybe there might be later. So next up, I thought we would allude to traffic. And Matt Keely also from V H B is here to discuss that. He has had some dialogue with the peer consultant. Matt, if you could bring us up to speed on where we stand on that?
Sure. The memo that Attorney Sullivan submitted to the town just boiled down some of the key points from the traffic study. So I mean, I can just reiterate those real quickly. So we did conduct a full traffic impact and access study with, in accordance with industry standards. You know, the general conclusions of the study were that the project will have minimal, minimal impacts. One of the things we also wanted to reiterate was that the property owner was conditionally approved for the commercial subdivision, which was a multi-use development and was much more impactful on traffic. And what we were showing in the study was that our proposed project will have significantly less traffic generation than that original project. In addition, you know, we wanted to note that there are a portion of those vehicle trips that are actually already on the road today because they're currently either traveling into Boston or to the MBTA stations. So we really wanted to just reiterate the, the minimal impacts of the project. And we have reviewed the peer review comments. We're working through those. And we will have a formal response to those. As of right now, I don't see anything major that we can't overcome. And I think the conclusions of the study will remain the same.
Thank you very much, Matt. And so now I would ask Michael Kim, if you could talk briefly about parking on site? And then we'll finish up with Sevi talking about sustainability and design, if that, if that's acceptable. Mike?
Okay, if you can hear me. We reviewed the comments about the, the parking requirement and if we use the, the standard method of computing parking, which is applicable for a standard office building, yes, then we would concur with the finding. However, I think it's worthwhile to point out the, this project was conceived in, in accordance with paragraph I on the parking requirements, which is a prescriptive, a prescriptive use and a prescriptive number. And while it's fine to go by the book for this project and this project, which is entirely unique, we feel that the book wasn't really made for the project. As a short explanation, if I can just get you to imagine the garage in your house. If it's a two car garage, these spaces are half your two car garage. And they are, I mean, to get a feeling for the size, I'm there to, to reiterate what Chris just pointed out with the height. With a building that size, forty-five feet is almost a preposterous suspicion of height. It's just that we're, we're not used to seeing buildings this small. Likewise, we conceive the use as half a garage. It would average one person in it at any given time. And because of the nature of this project, which by the way, we find is completely unprecedented in Cohasset, in Massachusetts, in the United States. If there is a precedent worldwide, we'd love to hear about it, but we just don't have an exact precedent to this type of project. But we felt that the, the path to compliance here was through paragraph I of the zoning bylaws. And that what we did was we applied a, a BOMA standard, a, a building management standard for the use spaces of this project and came out with a fourteen thousand square feet plus change, which would give us seventy parking spaces. We're providing eighty and we feel that with, with solid management, this is the probable, probable peak need for, for the project. So it's not intuitive, but we do feel there's, there is definitely a path to compliance for the parking requirements.
Great. Thank you, Michael. So Sevi. Is Sevi on here? Oh, there he is. Sevi, you're muted.
I'm muted. Here I am. Sevi Strakalovsky, Strakalovsky Architecture. Good evening. We've been through the basic design concept here, but just to recap, it's a unique opportunity to integrate buildings and landscape, buildings and site. The, the slope is integrated with the road system where the radial roads follow the contours generally. The buildings step up between the radial roads and are accessed from both levels. So all units are accessible. The buildings are, as Michael said, they're, they're small, they're, they're very kind of rustic. The they're unique. The roof slopes vary. The orientation of the buildings is such that we have a, a great opportunity to utilize solar orientation for passive solar gain on the south side and the roof slope down to the north side where you have insulated protection from the, the north elements. The, the spacing of the buildings creates a sense of community. There's, there's variety in them. There is a very systematic road system that will make finding one's unit extremely straightforward, which will aid emergency services and the post office. And the, the conference center provides the opportunity when those that have their own space in these units want to get together or have people come in, they're small, about twenty person spaces in the conference center. And, and that's down at the bottom of the site. At the top of the site and accessed by a very clear spine of, of landscaped accessible ramping and stairs is a pavilion and a, an open space which will be utilized at the top of the site where there's a great view out over mine light. The sustainability aspects are that the buildings are small. They're individually owned and managed. They'll be heated and cooled per the occupancy requirement, which is very unlike a traditional office building where the building is lit and heated and the common spaces, which there are none here, are, are maintained constantly. The heating and cooling is, is by non-emission electric heat and the, the controls are, are individually managed, which will be you know, in the utilization of these spaces, they're all spaces that'll be used from in-town offices on a. probably a half-week basis, which is the traditional pattern that's evolving. Or there'll be spaces that that serve as much more satisfactory workspaces than one's one's house. And they'll be within fifteen minutes of the majority of the of the tenants that we expect.
Thank you, Sevi, very much. Just by way of conclusion, I know an issue came up about the right to construct multiple buildings on a single lot, and I did some research on that. I think at the hearing, I mentioned that we were involved in a colony development down by the train station. That has multiple buildings on a single lot. In the decision, there was really no discussion about that issue, but more recently, obviously, the Stop and Shop Plaza, they're building a new building there, residential apartment building. And I found in the file that Mr. Egan wrote a letter on October two, two thousand seventeen, indicating that a a third building is there's no prohibition against it on a single lot. I think there's nothing in the I think there is nothing in the zoning bylaw prohibiting multiple structures on a lot. I think the inquiry by this permit granting authority is on the use, and if the use is allowed, and as long as you are complying with the setbacks, then I think that that's permissible, and that's what we are doing here. Our coverage is allowable, and we are in compliance with the setbacks on all structures. I would like to add too, with respect to parking, one of the reasons for having the number of spaces that we have is we wanted to also preserve as much green space and open space as we can and have less permeable material. So that's, you know, one of the designs here and one of the reasons why we think that this is a superior project. So we'd be pleased to respond to any increase from the board, and we're all available to to respond to the same.
All right. Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. What I'm going to do is to call on the planning board members to make their introduction. First, what we'll do is hear from our peer review, and then I will call on the planning board members in alphabetical order to get their first round of comments. So our peer review is Mr. Ellison, and would you like to is Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Peter Ellison. I'm a civil engineer with TEC. TEC is a civil engineering firm. We have many different divisions. What we were reviewing for this project specifically was the traffic generation associated with the new development, as well as site plan layout, general site layout type comments from a transportation perspective, as well as for compliance with the zoning bylaw. And finally, for review of the stormwater report and the proposed drainage system on site and conformance with the state standards, as well as the local town of Cohasset stormwater requirements. So we issued our first comment letter on July seventeenth. Since that time, TEC and the applicants engineer VHB have had a couple of meetings to go through the letter together and come to an understanding on the intent of each of the comments. And I think overall, the meeting was positive, and they are moving in the right direction. I think I would justify, I would say that most of the comments would be something that would be resolved in their next submission. So with that being said, there were fifty-six comments, I believe, in our letter, varying degrees of severity. Some of them were just confirming that we concur with the applicant's approach on how they documented the project. And some were requesting revisions or requesting additional information on the plans or in the documents. That being said, I I'm not going to recommend that we go through each of the comments because it is a lengthy letter. What I would recommend to the board is to allow VHB to come in with their next revised submission. And if there are any comments outstanding at that point, we could get into further detail on each of them. And with that being said, I'd be happy to turn it back over to the planning board and see if there's any questions that you have.
So let me ask the planning board members if they would prefer the method that you've just proposed. Since we reviewed the applicant's materials in a phased way, we've also looked at yours in a phased way, and I think I want to make sure that if somebody has a set of feelings right now that they want to discuss, that we should do that before we move on. So let's take the the really the three parts that the peer review is on. First off, is there anyone who would like to comment on the transportation study?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just a minute, Tom. Clark, would you like to talk about it? I just want to get a I just want to get a poll to know. Do you want to talk about it?
Um, I I don't have any comments about the transportation.
Okay, so that's okay. So then, well, wait, Paul Grady, do you want to talk about the transportation?
Not just yet.
Okay, Eric Potter, do you want to talk about transportation?
I know, like how Tom says, see where he goes with it. He usually talks pretty well.
Okay.
If there are some comments about traffic and parking, those would be another discussion.
Yes, well, okay, so Tom, Clark.
That's different transportation.
I'd like to have Tom start, then Clark, and then I have comments myself on the traffic slash yeah, basically the traffic study.
Okay. Oh, so good one. I get to talk about parking, parking and.
Parking, parking will come at at the next iteration. Okay?
All right. Well, I mean, the traffic.
The iteration, but we'll do we'll do traffic first, then we'll do parking because they're two separate things.
I mean, I'm not an expert. I mean, I've been to enough hearings as a bystander and as a participant that there's never been a traffic study that says it's never had an impact. You know, this it's a difficult intersection. Now it's going to become essentially a four-way intersection. I could, you know, the study is during COVID. I read our peer reviews comments about how that's accounted for. The the peak use of this site is to me is going to be morning and evening rush hour, and that's when the real impact on that intersection is. And I don't know if these traffic studies ever focus on particular periods of time of highest demand. But just as a layman, that just strikes me that there's no way you can add all of these office buildings and the potential occupants, and let's say it's just the eighty spaces. You're adding eighty vehicles. That there isn't going to be an adverse impact to what's there today in an already difficult intersection. When you're trying to take a left, either out of King Street or into King Street. So I mean, that's just a layman's observation. I'll let the experts explain to me why it's all okay, but.
Is is that your comments for now?
That's my comment.
Tom, okay, Clark?
So didn't somebody say that the state was moving away from signalization to rotaries? I I can't imagine a rotary in this location, but signalization is something that we've been talking about at this intersection for more over a decade. And in terms of the triggers, I think that at our last meeting, we had asked whether there was a preliminary response to a request for signalization. And I didn't hear any follow-up on on that particular detail. I I mean, if this intersection is below averages, the as the report and and the the peer reviewers say, below the state average, it still has some dangerous aspects to it. Opposite this, there is a a problem where cars turning, they conceal the cars behind them. So people do pull out and get clobbered, not because they can't see the car. And then people stopped opposite this intersection. They don't know whether the person in on at the other side of the intersection, leaving like the storage or the medical office buildings, whether those whether they're going to turn left or right, or who gets to go first, there's there's some of those logistical issues. But the entire medical complex, as as well as the cat, what is it called brass kettle office building empties into this. And even though the storage building themselves doesn't have a high impact, there there is the potential for all the 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 sports complex traffic and any future development up there, emptying out into the into the this thing. So as I've said, I thought we expected a preliminary answer from the state, from the applicant on this issue of signalization. And in terms of the details of the numbers, I guess I I would like to start there for from information. That's basically all I have to say about traffic.
All right. Thank you. So I'd like to make a few comments. So I suspect Mr. Strukalowski and maybe some of the other members here have been to Sea Ranch before. You know that design, which is houses are set back, there's lots of land. And you know where they have accidents? At the entrance and exits of the site. And the the feel of the project, given that you cannot see what's coming at you on any one of the sides of the street when the traffic is going at full speed, there's a there's a curve on both sides. If you're on the street by Hingham Lumber, you cannot see what's happening. If you're in the King Street, you cannot see what is happening. When you're coming around King Street going north, you can't see what's coming. And so it is, it's not just a question of volume. It's a physical problem of the design of the space itself. And adding additional people at the hours of the day that are very common, that's in the morning from seven to nine, then in the afternoon from three to seven, you end up with a situation in which people literally don't know who goes first, who goes second, who goes third. And so it's not a question of just how many cars there are. It's that the physical configuration is very problematic, and people spend a lot of time in their cars trying to figure out which their turn is. And so the solution to the problem can't be just a number count. It has got to be a set of thoughts about what do you do with a complex setting? It's not your fault, but what do you do in order to to not increase the the problems to it? I would also say that using April twenty twenty-one, it's really not relevant. It isn't relevant, right? We weren't even back. We didn't. We weren't back at school. People weren't back in their offices. So it's it's really, it's not an effective point of departure for what the numbers ought to be. And I don't know what the twenty sixteen conditions were. I would have to go back and look at when that actual study was done. Because we've seen studies that do midday when no one's on the road. And that Cohasset Cohasset is not like Iowa. We're not a gridded system. We're not neat and tawdy, straight lines in all directions. We're very non-standard. And that's why this particular intersection, and there's one down the street, we have the same kind of problem with, really needs to have somebody think about it both creatively, but then from the creativity to the analysis of what do you do with it? Because, for example, is that the only way to get to the site? Could you go around the the storage space and have an exit on there or an entrance on there? Could you come from the back where Hingham Lumber is? Could you have an entrance that way? So if you open up the 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 scale that you're working on, you may actually find that there's a better solution to the problem that would eradicate the anxiety that most of the people who are commenting on the project about traffic actually feel. So those are my general comments. I I think it's about creativity, and I think it's about out of the box, and I think it's about Cohasset not not being a gridded place. Paul Grady?
I'm going to parrot on and jump on, but that's a fifty mile an hour road at the best of times. Forty-five, if you give it a break, but that going up there, I travel it every day. I think most of us do. That's probably one of the most dangerous spots, people pulling out on the King Street or off King Street or on the Main Street. So I agree with Amy's. You may want to check that. And I'd really like to see a traffic study done, you know, on the prescribed hours. Morning commute, afternoon commute, because again, I do it every day, like most of us. And that's not an easy road. You have people taking you right into that brass kettle building, or they're stopping short because they're going to the gym. Or they're stopping dead industry because they may be going to the doctor's office or into the the enterprise rental. So it's rather congested in that immediate spot. And so we don't have lights right now, and there will be lights even further up the road. So I really would like to see a study done on the correct hours on a Monday through a Friday between seven and nine o'clock and between three and six o'clock, something like that.
Is that it? Oh, thank you. All right. So then let's move on to parking. Clark, would you like to begin with that?
Parking. So basically, they're they're saying that they want to provide a little a little bit more than half of what's what's required by the zoning bylaw. And I I just didn't get the 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 documentation of the the argument from from Michael that I I would have thought would have backed that up. There is some flexibility, but you know, you know, one one person per three hundred and fifty square feet of 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 this, of these, these things just doesn't, it doesn't make doesn't seem like it's the right number. I mean, I I suppose it's possible, but I I'd like to see some backup, even if there's no precedence for this particular type of space. I'd like to see the analysis of asking for less parking than what's required. And and if if these become so popular that everybody wants them, and there's two or three people in in these office space collaborating, office spaces collaborating, you know, probably a plan for additional or auxiliary future parking would be a part of allowing that as an option.
Is that your comments, Clark?
Yeah, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Is there any discussion on the planning board?
I I'm just going through.
Is this just going to be one at a time or like without any follow-up, like, yeah, that's a good idea, and that's not a bad idea? Or or we're just going to talk and then the the applicant will take it in and then decide what they want to respond to?
I thought I I think we could get a number of things on the table first and then talk. So Tom, do you have comments about parking?
I will. I'm concerned. I'd like to see a comparison that if you complied with the zoning bylaws or as our peer reviewer is putting out, what would the difference be in coverage and open space and all of that? Because I am concerned about that. I mean, there was a time, a long, long time ago, when Stop and Shop was first developed, and I was of the opinion that our commercial requirements were overly excessive, more spaces than we need. But you know, I'm having a hard time figuring out.
Tom, you need to face your mic.
I I'm having a hard time figuring out how this gets squeezed into section I of the parking regulation, section of the bylaw. But, you know, I'm open to possibilities, but you know, when it's even if I think our commercial parking requirements are excessive, cutting them down by half may be too far the other way. You know, then this ties into the use, and I know there's a gentleman on the chat who wants to comment about the needs assessment. No, we're speculating here about this use. We don't know what's going to happen. We're relying on an article of studies done this year. Nobody knows what the impact of COVID is going to be on office use. And, you know, I remind everybody that we're Cohasset has a lot of affluent office workers in it, but we're also off the beaten path from the highway. We don't get large-scale development of anything because of that fact. And I, you know, I think it's very speculative to think this is going to be filled up with a lot of happy office workers. But I I'd like to see more of the justification for the eighty spaces and the comparison to what the impact of full compliance would be on the open space and block coverage before I come to a conclusion about parking.
All right. Thank you. Paul Grady?
On the parking, I would just I would agree with Clark on that. I think it's you're being.
On the parking, I would just, I would agree with Clark on that. I think it's you're being uh you need a little more generosity in parking spaces. Because I can't see one person just going in. And you said it yourself, you're going to a conference center or some sales office. And that's at the main entrance, if I'm not mistaken? So that'll probably be the focal point driving by, I'm assuming. So um where do you plan to put all that overflow if you have some sort of sales meeting?
All right. Thank you, Paul. Uh Eric Potter?
Yes, I would uh say that um I don't know. My video is not still not working. There you go. Um I'd say I have concerns on all three issues that have been raised with regards to the parking. You know, is it going to be adequate if these spaces, these this is filled up and it's it's used to it's it's maximum capacity, there's people coming and going. I think traffic is is I didn't get to comment on that, so I'll just do it briefly. I think uh it it would be interesting to see now that the thing traffic is picking up again, what the studies are from during those peak hours, because I'm on them sometimes and and it is messy. And I do have some business in and out of those those uh buildings uh in that area. And um you know, I I am cautious, but uh it it can get, it can get borderline dangerous sometimes during peak hours. So that that is a concern of mine. Um and and that's why I'd want to see what what the traffic is now, you know, a a year later. And then the the use, I I I agree. I I piggyback on what Tom was saying. Um you know, is it a use that was limited to the the, you know, pandemic era? Is it something that's going to be needed down here in Cohasset? Um you know, being a small business owner here in Cohasset, you know, I a lot of people, this isn't really a destination, as as Tom said. And on top of that, a lot of people have home offices or have built out home offices over the last year. So the concern would be if if these don't get um, you know, filled up, yeah, are there alternative uses?
All right. Um I just have a few comments about use. So the the vision of use, it seems, is of somebody who would be relatively who would enter their office, their office would be primarily done by the internet and by telephone. Maybe there would be an occasional visitor. But one of the things that we know about businesses today, if you've ever been in an industrial park, is that's that's a very small part of what actually goes on. So you could have somebody who's making something and having parts delivered and then having parts taken out. You could have somebody that's doing psychological counseling and needs a parking space for their clients. Uh you could be doing uh any number of activities that are what we would call not office-building standard types of activities. And it would be useful to think through what would be the ways in which you would either accommodate that as a means or restrict it uh as another uh mechanism. So I think that's important to to kind of get on the table. I also um feel that uh we we do need to take account of the fact that over the last ten years, we have seen a dramatic increase in the size of cohesive homes. And that increase includes individual residential offices. Sometimes houses has two offices because both people work. So while there might be latent demand, I don't think we have um a good way, other than surveying people, what the actual potential demand is. And um you know, it's not, we're not, we're not trying to restrict you from doing something. What we're trying to do is make sure something can be successful. And since we live with our neighbors and we live in our neighborhoods, we know what's been going on here. And it might be worthwhile just to take a look at some of the statistics that we've had on the change in the average size of the house. It's almost doubled in the last uh seven years. So it's it's really about the model user and how are you, how are you gonna have that be either what you're conceiving of or build in the flexibility so it can be something and and uh and different? Um so that's what I'd say. Paul Grady?
Just to to jump on that for a minute, we have you guys done any studies on, you know, a project like this and, you know, on its viability? We have the workstation in the diagonal from what you're putting up, we are proposing to put up, and they're doing okay for themselves. But have you consulted with them to see how they're they're doing? It's a nice office. People get out, they go do their thing, or even the impact on a business like that, um which I can't see is being uh I hit them adversely. But again, as Amy said, a lot of people are working out of offices, home offices, and uh so those are the and people are going back to work. So you know, I'd just like to see how your studies are going. And have you talked to businesses that are similar, not in scope, because as one of the gentlemen said, this is something unique in what the country? Um for a small town, that's an interesting thing. But I'd like to see, say, the impact on the businesses that are currently there, like the workstation um and places like that.
All right. Thank you. For the first round of that, I'd also, I'd like to ask Lauren if you would allow Mr. Ra- um Ryan McGrath to comment, either by writing or speaking?
Sure. I will um promote Mr. McGrath now. Ryan, um if you could just state your name and address for the record when you have the floor. Uh one moment, please. And then for the benefit of the rest of the public, we're still on um the public hearing for the Situate Hill site. And um if you're interested in speaking to the board on this topic, if you could put your name and address into the chat, uh we'll promote you as appropriate. If you could also just try to limit um items that have already been stated, and we limit everyone to three minutes per person. Thank you.
All right, Lauren, right, Ryan, Ryan McGrath, just want to make sure that I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Just state your address for the record.
Yep, Ryan McGrath for Rose Hill Lane in Cohasset. Um thank you for the opportunity to speak. And a lot of these points may have been covered by this point, so I don't mean to be repetitive, but I just want to ask the board to really consider whether this development is needed. Uh I just wanted to comment on Mr. Trident Trident's comments on his third-party analysis. Just a quick drive around town and you'll see firsthand data points. One hundred and sixty-six King Street, which is the old Fosh Oriental Rug Store, which is directly across from this property, is now for lease. Nine Depot Court, which is the old Mr. Dooley's for lease. The Coldwell Banker, right around the corner from Mr. Dooley's, for lease. Three eighty Cushing, uh Chief Justice Cushing Highway, the Fang Shui Plaza, ninety-six hundred square feet is available for lease, plus the entire key realty development. These are huge spaces that could be converted to office space rather than breaking new ground. And they're already on the east side of three A. You don't have to cross three A at all. I also just want to point out the entire uh building at one oh three Ripley Road, across from the post office, is also available for lease. One of their listings is for an office space, a two-room office space with a bathroom and three parking spots. It's been listed for fifty-seven days. It's been visited, that site's been visited seven times, seven times in fifty-seven days. I don't know where the demand is for seventy new units for people to be working out of if an office space directly around the corner from downtown Cohasset has only been viewed seven times. So look, I mean, I've heard that it's like unique and maybe that's the draw, but there doesn't even seem to be a demand for a traditional office space. Um so just to wrap up my comments, like, I'm just concerned about a two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old seaside town being like the guinea pig for like the future of remote work, but I'm way more concerned that either all of retail is going to be, or all these retail office uh spaces are going to be left abandoned because there's no secondary use for them, or that this seventy-unit office park is going to be abandoned because there's no demand for a unique office space. Uh and and truthfully, if we go back to this COVID remasking mandate, it's apparent to me that there's more risk for retail space than demand for office space, considering we're seeing that there's tons of available office space released with no demand to convert it to office space.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Um so I'm gonna return to.
Can I, can I speak to that for a minute?
Uh you may, Tom.
I I I I think that's a great comment, and I it it I think the same way. Again, my comment that this is all very speculative. The problem is with site plan review is, you know, can we deny something on a on a proposed use that is otherwise allowed by the zoning bylaw? I I I think it's a giant risk for the developer. I believe I suppose as a planning board member, do I have to care if it's a giant risk? But you know, I I think it's a very important comment that uh Mr. McGrath just made, but we have to find a way into the uh site plan review bylaw to to find a way to apply that. And perhaps it's under subsection B one that we would find a way to do that. But uh um you're great points, but might be outside of our purview. That's my only worry about, so.
Thank you for that comment, Tom. So it it would, I would say at this point that we have provided, uh we have heard from the applicant. We have heard from the our peer review. Uh the the our peer review suggests that um the applicant go back and address the questions or complete the the ad- addressing of the questions that were raised by the peer review. Many of them are comments that we derived from both what you provided and also the peer review. Uh and that that clearly the issues that are really important here are the traffic, not just the volume, it's the bad situation. So it's 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 not your fault that it's just seventy people. It's really, it's a very awkward location. So think about that. The second is the notion of parking. We already have a s- a uh uh a shortage of parking and and that is, there's not any extra party parking in that that area at all. It's a very oddly configured um location. Uh and then um I mean, I think the idea of something that's really new and different for Cohasset would be fabulous. I don't think any of us think that's the wrong idea. I think the question is mechanically speaking, how can it work? So um unless the planning board members would uh have any other preference, I would like to continue this hearing. Uh Lauren, could you give us a time into the future, time and and date?
Yes, we will continue to uh Wednesday, September eighth at six thirty P M. And um I'll just note that we're going to continue all of our hearings to the start time of our next meeting and the exact sort of timing to be determined closer to the meeting date.
So it uh okay, so you're not, okay, great. You'll explain that to everybody later. So is that, is that okay for the planning board member?
It might be later in the agenda.
Right, right. We're trying to build flexibility in so we don't have big gaps in time. Clark, are you amenable to this?
Uh yeah, continue the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Um can I get a motion to continue the hearing, please?
So moved.
Roll call vote? Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Tom Callahan? Paul Grady?
Aye.
Eric Potter? Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you very much, and thank you for um your good work and thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
And thank you for the public comments. All right, now we're gonna move on to our seven forty-five. We're um almost ten minutes behind to um reopening the public hearing pursuant to MLG Chapter forty and three hundred dash twelve of the Cohasset zoning bylaws for an application for site plan review filed by Todd Amalange Plumbing and Heating Company. The subject property is eight zero eight Chief Justice Highway, Chief Justice Cushing Highway, and this is a continuation from uh twenty uh six twenty-three. Uh I can see if the applicant would please identify those individuals who are here and who will be speaking. We'll begin with the applicant.
Great. Thank you very much. Um my my name, this is Jeff Assett, civil engineer with Morse Engineering. And I'm here on behalf of Todd Amalang, who it looks like he has been promoted. Um so it looks like we're good to go. Um so we originally prevent presented this project to you at your hearing um approximately a month ago. Um I'll give you a quick overview of the project. It's a site plan review application to redevelop the property, property at eight oh eight CJC Highway. And that property is about twenty-five thousand square feet in size. It's currently developed with um a multi-use building. It was previously a retail as well as a residence in that building. The parking is primarily currently directly off of three A where the entire frontage is paved um with parking um up against the building. And there's also a driveway that wraps around the building with a uh curb cut to Brewster Road. The um the the proposed building is centrally located. It conforms to all the zoning requirements. So we're not asking for any zoning relief on this project. In the proposed conditions, we're going to have a one-way entrance um off of three A only with parking in front of the building and then also parking to the rear with the primary entrance and exit on uh Brewster Road in the same location where it is um where the driveway currently is. So to get you up to speed since the last meeting, um we had, just before the last meeting, we did receive review comments. Following the hearing, we addressed those and we received a second letter from the review consultant indicating that we have addressed all of their comments. Uh we also had correspondence with the fire department, with Chief Doc Ray, and they have signed off on the project as well. Um I did see a number of letters come in from the um residential neighbors in the neighborhood on on Brewster Road and the roads off of it. It seemed like the primary concerns were traffic. Um so to address traffic, there um we're we're making the primary entrance on Brewster Road for safety. Um it it's definitely the the safer safer location as opposed to on three A. And um I think the volume of traffic is going to be be negligible compared to the amount of traffic already um already there from the seventy-plus homes in the neighborhood, as well as there is uh traffic coming out of the commercial property um immediately opposite. And the the second main concern seemed to be about drainage. Currently, there's no stormwater mitigation on the property, and in the proposed conditions, we do have a a system designed that significantly reduces the amount of runoff. And that with, that has been engineered. Tables are included in the stormwater report with the rates and the volumes, and it's been peer reviewed. Um so this, the I I did visit the site. There are some improvements that could be done on the road um that I can discuss with the DPW. But as far as um this property, there'll be less water going to the road, thus improving the uh situation. So again, we um at this point, uh we have addressed the peer review comments and um the fire chief has signed off on it. And we'd be glad to answer any any other questions. Um the one other thing I want to add, the um in a di- what what we talked about a month ago, some of the changes were to clearly define the entrance as an entrance only, so we now have um two two signs indicating that uh vehicles at its entrance only, no exit, and also striping on the pavement. Um in addition to that, it was suggested to do use evergreens as screening along Brewster Road as opposed to the uh deciduous trees that we have had before. So we now have um staggered evergreens along Brewster Road for some privacy and screen and screening. Um so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Would either of the uh other applicants like to speak?
Uh Todd Amalang, I'm the owner of the property. And um no, I think um unless there's any specific questions, I'm comfortable with uh whatever Jeff has to say on the project. I appreciate uh your review.
All right. Thank you. Uh Mr. Brennan?
Uh thank you. Um Pat Brennan with AMRE Engineers. I did review the project for the board. Um as Jeff had mentioned, I submitted a comment letter back in June that they um they replied, they responded to and addressed addressed my concerns, uh just a couple of points that I wanted to bring up. I had asked them, um because the entire site is essentially going to be filled, I had asked them for a mass balance analysis to tell us how much fill will be coming into the site so you can kind of gauge how many truck loads would be required. And the response was it was a little bit over twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-one hundred cubic yards of fill, which would roughly be about a hundred and twenty-five truckloads of fill. The other um comment that I wanted to um just point out to the board is that they, I asked them to um identify the snow storage areas in the plan, which they've done. The snow storage area is a fairly small, I think, for the size of the parking lot, so there may be some um some issues where they they may have to haul that offsite at certain times if if the snow piles get too large. So I just want, you know, maybe that if the board were to approve it, that may be a condition that if, you know, snow starts to get out of control out there, that they need to haul it offsite. And then the, you know, the other comment that I had made at the first hearing is that the existing driveway entrances um don't comply with your zoning bylaws currently. Um because they're both closer than a hundred and fifty feet to the intersection of Brewster and Chief Justice Cushing Highway. However, the one off of three A, they're moving further away from um Brewster Road than it is today. And as Jeff said, that one is um an entrance only. And the one of Brewster Road is um in the essentially the same um location as the existing gravel driveway that's off Brewster Road. Um again, those are existing non-conformities that I just wanted to point out. Again, those are existing non-conformities that I just wanted to point out. And as Jeff mentioned, I did review the stormwater. They made some changes to the design based on some setback issues that they had with the septic system. And when I rereviewed the, the revised information, I'm comfortable that the, the mitigation that they've provided with their stormwater best management practices will reduce the runoff or won't increase runoff in the post-development condition. And I believe that it complies with the Cohasset stormwater management bylaw. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody had any.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will begin with the planning board members by alphabetical order. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think generally it's, it's a, a good mixed-use concept that seems like it might work. And but in, in looking over the plans before the meeting, I, I'm just not convinced that an extra driveway on, on 3A helps the project and helps this area of, of 3A. And I, I was trying to think if you, if you got rid of that extra entrance and then just use Brewster Road as your, as your entrance and exit, it does provide more sort of kind of control. But Brewster Road isn't really in great, great shape. And my understanding is it's a private way, not a public way. So I don't know if this particular development has proof or deeded access to Brewster Road that they could produce. That might be the first step and then a consolidation of, of the access. Because I don't think you lose, you might lose one parking spot, but I don't think you necessarily would, would lose substantial parking if that extra drive aisle was, was eliminated. But there's these other questions that are related to it. So those are, that's my main point. And I know that's an 800-pound gorilla for the applicant to deal with, but that's, that's all I got right now.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
Was a traffic study done for this project? Hello, anybody? I didn't see one.
No, a traffic study has not been performed.
Okay. I mean, you know, I, I get the neighbors' concerns and this is a more, a larger scale use than what's been there in the past, but it's allowed by zoning. So it can happen, but I think they're the, you know, I don't like getting a form letter like we did, but they all made the same point that the, in the intersection is a tough one. And I think that, again, this is another intersection like the other one we were just talking about, that it's tough to get out of at rush hour. It's, if the greenery is in business during the summer and the spring in the summer, it's, on the weekend, it's almost impossible. They have to hire a detail to deal with it. It's that bad. And, you know, yeah, this is a much more smaller scale use than Situate Hill, but, you know, traffic is one of our concerns in the site plan review process. And I'm wondering if we should study it more. And I don't see the having access, you know, to, to the neighbor's point and to the point Clark just made, I don't see having an access on 3A helping the situation. I think it probably would be safer overall that the access be on Brewster. But still, it's a tough intersection and the road is not up to, you know, normal width and subdivision standards. So I, I'd like to consider that we have a traffic study down here.
But one point in addition, Tom, I just want to interrupt for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
This area of 3A is, is slated by the state to be completely redone with, with sidewalks on both sides. And I, I don't see any evidence that the applicant has taken into account what that, what those design solutions are as a part of their plan. Might, it might be useful for them to, to try to superimpose on their documents what's being planned. Sorry, go, go ahead.
No, that's, I, that, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Because that may solve the problem where they're not doing an extensive traffic study. What the state may be proposing may solve this problem and may solve the problem for everybody in that neighborhood who related all of these stories.
Again, just as, just as discussion, the state had proposed signalization, the possibility of signalization in this area or somewhere in, near the Curtis Plaza. But it might not be too late to get a signal at this, at this, at this spot.
I'd like to make a point of information. According to the current Cohasset Street Names List as of 2016, Brewster is not a public way.
Right.
I did, I did say that. I did say that earlier, Amy.
I, I know you did, and I just wanted to confirm that by saying I had the list.
Oh, thank you for the confirmation.
All right. Well, again, my, my main concern is the concern the residents raised about traffic, but it may be very well that the state's plans will address it to everyone's satisfaction. But I agree with Clark that that should be looked at. And what at least is on the proposals right now should be superimposed over what you want to do here. And, and, you know, frankly, I would get rid of the curb cut on 3A.
Paul Grady?
No, all my thoughts were covered. Thank you.
Eric Potter?
All the same thoughts with the safety of 3A and people getting in and out during high volumes, high traffic times, just gotten pretty busy down that neck of the woods. You also have that Dunkin' Donuts that, that, like, a couple hundred yards down that sometimes spills over into 3A. But in high-traffic times, you know, people are flying up and down there, people coming in and out, could be problematic, but, you know, I don't, I'm sure that, take a look into that.
Um, all right, thank you. So I, I have a question and it might just be as wild an idea as possible, but have you ever thought about flipping the building? So that the access is on 3A, but that the business, that the actual entrance and exit is somehow configured where the bays of the building that the work will be done on are actually on the east side of, I think that's the east side of the, maybe the south side of the, of the site.
I mean, it's something we did talk about, but Mass Highway wants to see the number of curb cuts on 3A minimized for safety. I, I don't think that they would, I think they would rather see traffic go through Brewster Road. I, I, and we can certainly look into a traffic study on this. Our thoughts on, on it are that the, the contractor bays are somewhat of a low-traffic use. You typically, if you have a plumber operating out of one of them, they're probably going to get there in the morning, grab their supplies and then head out for the day. They're not in and out throughout, throughout the day. That, that's why we, we think the amount of vehicles going to be generated by this site, that, that increase, isn't going to be much in comparison to all the 70-plus houses, houses and also the, the commercial property on the opposite side of Brewster Road that has a curb cut on Brewster Road. But we'll, we'll, we'll have the traffic consultant look into that.
Those are, those are going to be rush hour, leaving the site, rush hour, coming back to the site. So they're going to contribute. It, it may be certainly more vehicles than the site generates today, but it's going to generate them at the worst possible time in the day. And to the extent these tradespeople are working on Saturday when the village greenery creates the nightmare, it's just going to add to that nightmare. I, I guess you can say, well, their detail, we'll take advantage of their detail cop and we'll just do that. I, again, I don't think you need to do an extensive study. If the state has a solution to this intersection, that might be the answer.
Yeah, we, I'll certainly look at that. I'm, I'm curious as well.
Right. But I think we have to be realistic, Tom. You know, if it's five years from now or 10 years from now as opposed to a year from now, then we, we have to scale it as to whether it's a viable condition that would make this site more, safer and more. It's really about effective, effective operation. Safety is an issue, but it's also not very effective. Clark Brewer?
Right. The corridor work was supposed to be done this year or next year. It might have been delayed because of COVID, but it's not five years out. There's no way. Lauren may know that, that exact date, but, you know, it makes sense to, for the applicant to know what's going on with, out there as a part of their project and, and see how they can dovetail it to a mutual advantage.
All right. So we have two primary comments. Oh, I think, and please add if I don't have them, and have all of them. And the first is that there's an issue with traffic and accessibility at key hours of the day. And that the, the question is to have a traffic study to understand how that space works. The second is to investigate the ability to do what you're proposing in light of the fact that this is a private way and there are special conditions associated with that. Is there any other item that I'm missing?
Lauren, just a minute. I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you speaking about public points? Because there's a couple of comments, or we're not there yet.
Okay. No, now we're going to go to the public.
Okay. Okay, thank you. First, I'm going to, I'll just, just for the record, I submitted to the board today and the applicant just a compilation of public comment letters that were received. We received in the ballpark of 27 in the last couple of days to date through, or this morning. So I sent those out and we have that on the record. And then there's a couple of people in the chat here. First, I want to promote Michael Rosen of 39 Ledgewood Drive to address the board. For anyone who's new who's joined us again, if you'd like to address the board, please put your name and address in the question and answer function and we'll, we'll promote you as necessary. And we do ask all members of the public, please try to limit your comments to new topics, things that haven't been stated before. And we ask that each speaking member, no more than three minutes per person. Thank you. Hi, Michael. If you could state your name and address to the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Rosen, 39 Ledgewood Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to keep my comments brief and non-repetitive. I live at 39 Ledgewood Drive. I've lived here with my wife Lisa and our, our boys for 27 years. Not sure how familiar you are with it. It's kind of tucked away behind the CVS Shopping Center. The, the neighborhood consists of Brewster Road itself, a private way, and four other streets totaling about 70 homes. I believe I speak for the vast majority of the residents of our neighborhood in expressing serious concerns about this development. I want to be clear that we are not taking issue with the commercial use of the property generally. We have no issue with the owner making meaningful use of what is right now dilapidated structure and an overgrown field. The fundamental concern is the one that you've been discussing. And we oppose a plan as this one is currently configured that calls for an entrance-only driveway on 3A and an entrance and, and exit driveway on Brewster. And I want to make clear, Mr. Hassett referred in his comments to, to a driveway that's already there. That's a gravel driveway that was, in all the years I have been here, never used as access for the retail use, for the public use. It was just a pickup and drop-off for the owners of that pool store and the, the use that was before that. So I think it's a little bit unfair to say that that's already being used in the way that it's being discussed now. What we're discussing now is this development, this building, which generally we're okay with, but 16 parking spaces and the vehicles that will be using them, all exiting onto Brewster Road, which is not a commercial road. It's not even a regular sort of residential subdivision road. It's a private way. This access point for our neighborhood, our only access point, is quite congested much of the time. There's already a driveway to Abington Bank and the CVS Shopping Plaza right there, right across from where this, this new cut and driveway would be. We already deal with a lot of congestion there with the village greenery when it's active, which is about three-quarters of the year, which frequently needs a traffic detail during the busy times. Brewster Road at that point is approximately 20 feet wide at, at the, at the entrance of where this driveway would be dumping these, these vehicles that are using these 16 parking spaces. And it's only 24 feet wide at the stop sign. That's much less than the 40 feet required for a residential subdivision street and 50 feet that's required for heavy local traffic, at least as I understand the, the current bylaw section. We get significant congestion there in the winter with snowfall narrowing the roads. We have an ongoing wastewater runoff issue at the end in the same vicinity that turns to ice and creates a hazard for people exiting, which would be all of this traffic. If you approve this plan, all of this traffic would be exiting the same place that we're exiting and slipping and sliding on this frozen water. We already have a lot of traffic on Ledgewood Drive, not just because of the 68 families and school buses and work trucks and landscapers and delivery trucks and all the other stuff that comes in and out, but also because we already have traffic using that for the CVS Shopping Center that's right next to it, and there's an access point there and for the Abington Bank. So we believe it is inappropriate to funnel all of this additional vehicular traffic associated with this new development and its 16 spaces onto what is already a choke point at the place where Brewster Road and 3A intersect. We think this does create an unreasonable safety and traffic issue for our neighborhood. And we ask that you consider asking the, the owner to reconfigure the plan as Ms. Glassmeyer was suggesting is a possibility, so that 3A, which is a commercial road, is used by this commercial property for all access and exit to this property, not Ledgewood Drive, which is a residential private way. I mean Brewster Road, which is not a, which is not a, a commercial road. Thank you. Appreciate your, the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Ms. Susan George?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Well, thank you. Hello, my name is Susan George and I live at 74 Brewster Road. I've got two concerns that I'd like to register with the board. First is that the proposed site development plan clearly is using Brewster Road as the sole egress to solve an existing and well-documented 3A left-turn traffic problem by dumping all the commercial traffic onto a residential private street. These 3A left-turn problems are not new. Just a few moments ago, a, a state plan was referenced. The state conducted a traffic study eight years ago, yet no corrective measures have been taken to date to address the existing dangerous conditions with 3A. Ledgewood residents are already facing long wait times to be able to take a left out of the neighborhood. And it is my view that using a residential private street to address a state road problem will exacerbate the already unresolved dangers. If anybody read the paper this past Friday, it was noted that no plans will be taking effect until 2024 to even get a bid out to address the issues such as the sidewalk that was referenced, et cetera, for 3A. So we're looking at several years of, of, of issues and I wanted to make sure that that was referenced. Second, I do want to just reinforce that our neighborhood is full of families with children and adding more cars, and in particular, industrial trucks, presents, presents a danger to our children who are walking, biking and taking scooters, you know, as well as getting on and off buses on Brewster Road. The street is narrow and it has no sidewalks. So as Mike referenced earlier, it's even narrower in the winter with the snowplow banks and the water and the ice backup at the entrance caused by an existing lack of storm drainage. So I, I personally feel that dumping a volume of commercial traffic onto the entrance of this neighborhood will make this intersection even more dangerous than it is today for our children.
Thank you, Mrs. George. We appreciate your comments. Maggie Moy?
Hi, I'm Maggie Moy.
And please try to keep your comments to new comments for us. It helps us in our work.
Sure. I'm at 33 Ledgewood Drive and I have been in, on this road for 23 years in this neighborhood. And I've raised my children, four children. What I'd like to ask- What I'd like to ask is to Jeff is, could you tell us a little bit more about what type of retail business were you planning in the front opposed to the contractors in the back? What would be the hours? How, you know, is this a Monday through Saturday? How long of a workday do you propose this as? I mean, can you tell me any projections of what you were thinking of for this particular site? Will there be outdoor lighting that will go into the neighborhood? You know, currently, right now, like the bank has lights, but they're primarily in the front, so it doesn't go into the home. Also, I have not, I can say I have not seen your site plan. Is there a plan that we could see that shows what the building will look like? And where can we view that as well as? There is a lot of flooding that is back there, and I know you you talked about addressing that. But I don't know if you're really aware of how much flooding. And that home that is behind your site could possibly no longer exist or will have flooding issues. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of how much it doesn't drain. So but those are some of the questions I'd like to have answered, if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Moy. We're going to collect those questions and then we'll address them as a group. So let's move on to Ms. Patterson.
Hi, Jean Patterson, 12 Ledgewood Farm Drive. I think my biggest question is around, again, that exit on Brewster. And my concern is I'm not sure how the cars and trucks are even going to make a left turn onto Brewster to then exit to 3A because many times cars are backed up from the stop sign all the way to where the CVS entrance is because they're trying to make that left turn onto 3A. So, you know, I think it's just, again, the exit onto Brewster at that spot on Brewster is the biggest concern because I don't think there's going to be any room for them to come out and to make the left when there's constant traffic. I mean, that our street, we people go up and down 100 times a day. And so it's just, it's going to be these workers, if they're trying to get to a job, if they're union workers or they're, you know, they're going to be rushing. They're going to go and get their stuff and get to their job because they're, you know, being, you know, if they have responsibilities and if they are trying to rush out into that line of traffic or, you know, cutting across because they can't wait just to get onto Brewster, I think that's just going to cause another problem. So I don't know, again, you know, have you thought about that? And again, looking at that traffic study for that, those spots and those turns. I think everything else, you know, has really been said. You know, and that's really the, you know, the biggest concern. And if it can be revisited to have exit, you know, on 3A, I looked at the property, there's enough room to make a U behind the building. Come in by King's Jewelers, go behind the building, make a U driveway, and it goes right out the other side onto 3A, you know, parallel to Brewster.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Patterson, for the suggestion. Let's move on to Graham Mallison.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and and please keep your comments to new ones. That'll help us.
Yes, specifically, I was, it's very redundant here, but specifically was curious as to why the the project would deviate from comment two on the Armor Engineers Report, which which addresses the 150 foot rule to the center line of an intersection. I think that exacerbates some of the issues regarding some of the the concerns around traffic trucks pulling out, et cetera. Why would we deviate from existing code to to place the driveway entry exit on Brewster Road where it's currently being shown in the plans?
All right, thank you. I've got that one down. Mr. Frederick Winsman?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and Members of Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Frederick Winsman, 9 Ledgewood Drive. I live here with my wife and three and a half year old son. My points revolve around an added safety points as well as aesthetics. I do point out that we sent a letter to the board as well. So in in this regard, this these comments refer to more of a bird's eye view of this of this property and the concerns raised when one takes that perspective. This is a three story building that is totally out of place in this strip of 3A. There is no other residential street off of 3A that has any building greater than one story at its entry point. The the two three story buildings on 3A are set way back behind large parking lots. So this three story building, again, and I mean this very respectfully, but nonetheless, I want to make this comment, is like a massive wall to the entrance to our neighborhood. The second point that is safety and aesthetic related is what I see and others have told me see as a need for fencing around the back and the side of this property. A to ensure safety with loading docks or trucks or whatever will be in the back. And secondly, to maintain to some degree the the look of our neighborhood. Those are the points that I wanted to make that I don't believe were made earlier. I do. I'm not sure if this final point was made, so I'll just mention it again. I apologize if it's if it's a repeat. But Brewster is not a public way. And really what is being created here is a diverted use of Brewster because of the problems entering and exiting 3A. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and Members of Board.
Thank you, Mr. Winsman. Ms. Corinne Young? Ms. Ms. Young, you're muted?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, my name is Adolfo, last name Slem, L E U N G. I live on 85 Brewster Road. I've been here 45 years in Cohasset, same location. Okay. Unfortunately, all of my neighbors are smarter than I am. They have pretty much covered all of my points. In terms of traffic, Susan George covered it very well. Being a private way, Susan George covered it very well. Mr. Winsman covered the height of the building. It's just, you know, reinforce his point. It's like nowhere in Cohasset, if you drive along 3A, there's some three story buildings where the train tracks are. And then and then there's this many building right across the street from Shaw. There's another three story, but it's set all the way back. But this proposed three story is right at the road. It is right at the entrance of our street. It's come color, you know, we planned, you know, very nice flowers in the entrance that looked like an estate, okay? It's sort of like 100 pound street. You know, you're entering in a state. It's very aesthetically pleasing. But then you have this building three stories high. It is going to be look, it's going to be look like a wall, okay? But I'm just basically repeating what my my neighbors have been saying.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your comments and and we are taking them down.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, the last comment we have is from Candace Hartford.
Hi, my name is Candace Hartford. I live at 74 Ledgewood. I live with my husband and I have three children all under the age of six. And my concern is just really safety. I have two children with autism. They're six years old. And while I thought I lived on a cul-de-sac that would be safer, we already have so many trucks coming in and turning around on our street. We've had to put all kinds of fencing all over our yard. And my children are now eloping over the fence onto Brewster. And they have GPS bracelets and all that stuff. But long story short, it's a concern for me significantly to think about the possibility of having these big, large trucks when we have so many small kids. That's it.
Thank you very much for that comment. All right, Planning Board members. I'm going to ask your comments. Clark Brewer?
I I've made all the new comments already tonight.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
I'm wondering, Jeff Hassett, can we get the plan of the property up on the screen?
Yeah, I can bring it up. And I was also going to note to any of Butters, the all of the plans are available on the Planning Board website if you want to look at them closer.
Jeff, I have it if that helps.
Oh, I have it right here.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the cover sheet. I have the full site plans as well as the architecturals.
Okay, and 3A is at the bottom.
Correct.
And I don't mean to put the neighbors on the spot, but if this property did not get developed, you still have 60 some odd houses and a substandard width of the road, bad intersection when the Village Greenery is going. Your problems aren't going to be solved by this not happening. But I'm just curious from the neighbor's point of view, where on 3A do you think this can safely go? We heard that the state discourages curb cuts on 3A, pulling in and out of a high speed, a higher speed road like 3A. I just can't conceive of that being safer. Given, given, you know, the Brewster Road is not optimal either. But I'm just curious, playing the devil's advocate here, where on earth can this have an access on 3A that serves both exit and entrance? And how is that safer, having another opening and curb cut that close to the intersection?
So, Tom, can I refine that comment and simply say that the problem to be solved is access? And, okay, we're asking the applicant to think hard about this. There've been a few recommendations that have been suggested. But that access is really, that's the number one issue for most people. There's an issue also of size that will be deliberated the next time we read, I'm sure. So let me go to Paul Grady.
Just listening to Butters and having been up and down Brewster Road and being stuck trying to get out to take a left myself on different occasions, that is a tough road on any given point in time. And it does get very slippery and icy, so there is a safety factor. And I'd ask that the developers look into that to see if they can revamp their plans in any other way. I just don't know. You know, with Brewster being a narrow road the way it is and not in the best of shape at any given point in time. And having slipped on it in ice because I had to walk up Brewster and it's problematic at best. So I would just ask that the developers take a look and see if there's any concessions they can make to access. Then, you know, using what Tom said as well. So I would just put it in the developer's hands to see if there's anything they could do.
All right, thank you for that, Paul Grady. Eric Potter, yeah, Eric Potter?
Yeah, I just think that my only comment would be if we've given a lot of attention, you know, and tried to help out similar about Smith Place Development. So I just want to, you know, be fair and equitable and and listen, there's been a number of people that have spoken up tonight. So I think in order for the Planning Board to be consistent, we've got to listen to the citizens when they raise these sorts of issues and see if we can work with the developer to figure out something that works for everybody.
All right, so for Mr. Hassett and Mr. Amalum, we've got, I'm sure you've got a list of the comments that we have and we'll be taking them down on the record. My recommendation is that we continue this hearing and request that the applicant consider the issues that have been raised. I don't think I need to go over them, but we will convey to you if you need a detailed list of it. I think I must have 2468, about 20 comments that are of importance to be looked into.
Great. Well, we appreciate all the comments from the board as well as all the Butters. We do understand the concerns. Safety was the number one priority here. And I'll tell you, we did look at a lot of other options. I'm sure Mass Highway would not want the primary exit and entrance off on 3A. And we chose the location where we are because that's where the current driveway is. We certainly could move it a little bit further down Brewster Road, but we wanted to keep it away from the residences. But with with all the concerns about traffic, we, it looks like we likely will consult with a traffic engineer to get a second expert opinion on that. And they'll take into consideration the existing flow, traffic flow on Brewster Road and the increase in traffic to see if that'll have any any negative impact that would be noticeable. And certainly they will analyze the peak, the peak times, the commuting times. Other than that, I think there's a lot of, well, I'd like to address the height. This building well conforms with the height. It's, I would call it a two and a half story building. And the maximum height allowed is 35 feet to the midpoint of the roof. And this is only a 27, so it's well under the maximum height requirement. As far as rights to Brewster Road, the applicant has rights to Brewster Road, just like any other person, any other property on Brewster Road. But we we can certainly get a legal opinion on that as well. Other than that, I know there's a lot of other concerns, but we'll put together a letter and we'll address all of them in writing.
Great, thank you. And do pay attention to questions of flooding since that sounds like that's a serious issue that that will be an issue for the for the project as a whole.
Yeah, I visited the property today after reading a lot of those comments again. And it it looks like there's, the catch basins aren't. Well, Brewster Road's in tough shape, and I could see areas where the water would puddle before it got to the catch basins, creating ice in the winter. So it looks like some minor correcting of the paving could 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 go a long way here.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. So Lauren, can you give me a date and time for this hearing to be continued?
Yes, we will continue this to Wednesday, September 8th at 6:30 PM. And where closer to the date, I will confirm an exact time on the agenda or a close to exact time. It may be later than 6:30 PM, depending on how our schedule stacks up.
Thank you. Tom, would you make a motion?
Do what? I move that we continue this to September 8th at 6:30.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Clark Brewer?
Hi.
Tom Callahan?
Hi.
Paul Grady?
Hi.
Eric Potter?
Hi.
Amy Glassmyer. All right, thank you very much. So that concludes the public hearing materials that we have for the evening. We do have a little bit more business potentially. Let me turn to Lauren.
So I I don't have any more business for you. We covered a lot in sort of in the first half of our meeting. Unless there's any other items from the members, then I will look forward to seeing you all on August 11.
All right. Do we have no minutes to approve?
I have two sets.
Sorry.
All right.
Two, 24, 21, and six, 16, 21. I know, we're going to kind of backwards.
I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
Second, okay, Clark Brewer?
Hi.
Tom Callahan?
Hi.
Paul Grady?
Hi.
Eric Potter?
Hi.
Amy Glassmyer, I. With that, we would like to conclude this meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board on Wednesday, July 28th, 2020. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Clark Brewer?
Hi.